Action. Welcome to the town board meeting. A work session is Wednesday, September 5th. I'm sorry, it's not September 5th.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, 2018. And we will start off with...
Okay, let's just do the first one real quick. So approval of the Loop system. So we have received a grant for a substantial portion of the installation of a Loop system, which is a technical term for an enhanced listening system that we were seeking to install in the Chapakua Performing Arts Center. It actually works with hearing aids and enhances the sound. My husband's favorite joke. And then also comes with a little iPad packs that you can, you know, with your headphones that listen as well. And we're trying to do this to enhance our senior programming at the Chapakua Performing Arts Center. We've received two bids for this. One of them is for $5,500. The other one is for $16,900. Although the $16,000 one has significantly more listening technology receivers, you know, eighteen versus the six. It's the labor that actually is tremendously more expensive on the installation.
But the technology is the same?
Yeah. So we'd like to go with the $5,500 ones. We have a $3700 or $3900 grant that will offset it. And so we'd like to be able to proceed with the installation. Yes, thank you, Chris. Okay. Next, Sabrina's here to talk about an RFP for traffic consultant that we have issued. For the long and the short of it is, is that DOT is recommending a number of changes that they're going, that they're seeking to have Summit Greenfield take and install in and around the Sawmill Parkway interchange with British Digest Road. And we actually don't have a traffic consultant that the board feels comfortable with, that we can take and have evaluate independently and see whether or not these changes would assist, make things worse, make things better, how much better, and be able to, you know, speak intelligently about what those impacts might be.
What's our leverage, Nick? If we have this, this consultant is for our third-party analysis?
To the town plan, just as though...
Right. And what's our leverage if our analysis is different than DOT's?
They're asking us to make changes to our conditions of approval based on changes that they're asking to be made. The state is going to recommend and weigh in on things. We need a third-party validation that the changes that the state are requesting are valid and would give us what we need in order to change the conditions.
Right, so in the event that we come back and say no, or yes, then we do it, obviously we say no. Just what's our leverage, say no to the state?
Well, it depends on the situation. If you're talking about...
I'm saying very generically.
I mean, we could negotiate something, though, if we think something is more or less significant. We could talk to DOT about it, right?
First off, you're bound by, first off, two things. You're bound by what your expert says because you're laypeople. So you can poke holes in the expert. You can try to discredit them if you don't believe their opinions. But once they give you your opinion, you've got to follow that opinion because that's what your expert has told you. What you do with that, you then go to the DOT. It depends ultimately. If you're issuing the permit since it's a town permit, you're in control of it. If it's a DOT permit, they're going to listen to their own experts. So it's a matter of lobbying.
The DOT permit, I mean, if it's expert to expert, at least they'll have an informed discussion.
Absolutely, yeah.
And my question is, what are the changes? Are you...
We don't know yet. I mean, the bottom line is, in discussions with Chapakua Crossing, they are looking at changes based on DOT's requests. We currently do not have a traffic consultant that the board is comfortable with. Rather than we, all of this is very time-sensitive. SG is time-sensitive, the state is time-sensitive, DEP is involved. Rather than waiting until we have something sitting before us to do a consultant search, we thought it would be better to get ahead of it, try and find a traffic consultant without the pressure of time, so they can come in and interview with you.
I guess, I guess my...
I can't answer your question.
No, my question is, if DOT has made certain requests of Summit Greenfield, right? And the DEP is involved, they have been concrete at some point. So my question is...
We can only hope.
So my question is, have we reached out to DOT or Summit Greenfield and requested copies of the correspondence between the two organizations?
Nothing has been formalized yet.
It's been oral.
You've been in meetings.
We're part of the discussion. DOT wants changes. We wrote a letter to DOT talking about the preemption, talking about the problems there. They agree. And Summit Greenfield is going to be paying for this. And DOT is going to make them do some changes. We just want to have, instead of relying on just DOT's expertise and Summit Greenfield's expert, we wanted to have somebody on our side who can...
Right, but I have no problem hiring a consultant. But I guess to a certain extent, you know, it would be good to have a sense of what the conversations were about. So if it's only about the preemption signal at the traffic light, or is it more comprehensive than that?
My understanding is that DOT is concerned about the amount of traffic that will be coming through the intersection due to chapakua crossing.
Yeah.
That coupled with the town...
Shocking. Yeah, surprise.
By the way, they could have said this five years ago.
Yeah, they never commented initially.
This is the first time they've said that. That coupled with the letter that the town issued regarding preemption has said to DOT, we need to make changes to this plan, to Summit Greenfield's traffic plan that affects Route 117 and affects Roan Brook Road. Okay, so they're looking at it, and they're saying, what changes can we make to deal with this situation, to make it safer for the cars? We don't know what those changes are. There's been a lot of discussion that changes need to be made, DEP needs to be brought to the table. We committed to getting a traffic consultant in line, so we are prepared to review whatever it is they put at our...
All right, so... Sabrina, I'm sorry, one second. Just so it's clear, even though we gave DOT before Chapakua Crossing was approved, and they were noticed as an interested party and had the opportunity to comment and declined to do so, they are now allowed to take another bite of the apple and say, oh, yeah, maybe there is a problem?
It is, they're issuing the permit, so it's part of the...
Because our CFOs, our permits are conditioned upon the state approval and the state permitting for their off-site roadway approvals.
But at the same time, as much as it's certainly been better before, it's good that it's coming now, even though they killed the roundabout, well, they didn't kill the roundabout, but...
It's very good that they're doing it now instead of later, but they have admitted in meetings that they understand that the problem is much bigger than this...
You don't, you know, you only put so much into the...
All I know is, we had the meeting with DOT about the roundabout, and we brought all the traffic numbers to their attention at that...
How much more can you make a longer access off the Sawmill going southbound? Make a longer off ramp? I mean, how much more can you expand? I'm just thinking a lot.
No, I know. I don't have the...
But at the end of the day... I don't think they should get the MTA involved and say, let's build a bridge. So let me ask you one other question. Since we are now hiring a traffic consultant...
We're not hiring anybody. You are interviewing, hopefully, at least three traffic consultants.
It makes sense to me.
That's fine. So we're going to be hiring a traffic consultant. And is the thought, too, that this would be kind of a traffic consultant that the town can have on call? So if, as a new, as a new issue comes up, we can say, oh, let's talk to our traffic consultant about how...
As long as there's no conflict with them doing work for the...
Okay, so my other question is, we know that Whole Foods' business model is changing with curbside pickup and going to be, you know, shop online, deliver at home, right? And they're planning on using cars for that. Can we, at some point, add to this consultant's responsibilities a more objective look at what the impact of that changed business model is going to be?
Sure, maybe you're a consultant.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. The intent here is that you have an opportunity to interview various transportation consultants without having the pressure of an application before you.
What's the point? What's the end game of that? I mean, that's the point I don't understand.
Well, the end game would be to try to accommodate as best you can for traffic that wasn't planned for at time one.
I know, but nothing's going to change as far as 117 or...
You're right, we're limited, no matter what they say.
Any change is going to come down by the highway, which is what we're doing anyway.
Whatever it may be, I don't have that answer, nor do you, nor does anyone here. So you might as well, otherwise...
Well, maybe the only thing is, maybe we could limit delivery hours or something like that potentially. And let me, and let me go back and say, just make sure I understand. So Summit Greenfield, since this is part of the application and the town's hiring a consultant, would they be responsible for paying for our consultant?
In that particular instance, they'd be...
I think, I think Lisa and I can tell you, it's already...
Okay. And there's a nice guy, I forget his last name, John, something, that is a traffic consultant. They've got that really smart girl that was working for...
Jennings or Collins?
John, I don't think it's Collins. She was a...
Collins is something like you.
No, no, John.
John Jennings.
John Jennings.
No, John. His company's name is John. It's a traffic consulting. They were very straightforward. We ended up using him at the firehouse when we were having...
John Myers?
John Myers.
We've sent the request to John Myers.
I had that actually in my head, which was going through. His name is...
Okay, Sabrina, is there anything else? Oh, let's just jump down to zoning.
Zoning, RFP.
Yeah. So in discussions with Nick and Sabrina, and as a follow-up to our discussion with the planning board, one of the things that we talked about was issuance of a request for proposals for the Chapakua Hamlet zoning revisions to allow someone to take and draft zoning revisions or some sort of draft...
Legislation.
Legislation for us, so that we could have a concrete conversation about what that might look like insofar as density. When we had the conversation, when we had the joint meeting with the zoning, with the planning board...
Yeah.
You know, we talked about the fact, there were certain things that we needed to be mindful of. Sheila Cressby talked about the canyon effect and trying to avoid that. How tall did we want to go? We have a number of properties that are selling downtown that we have been approached about zoning changes. And we don't want to be...
Traditional stories.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Things like that. And we don't want to be in a position where we are doing spot zoning and changing just one parcel or another's parcel. We want this to be part of a coordinated effort of rezoning downtown to create the density, the height, the mix that the board wants.
But I thought we were combining that, because I'm totally on board with that, and I agree with that. But I thought we were also saying at the meeting that, kind of in a vacuum, saying, oh, we should do this and this, wasn't as helpful as potentially getting, and what's the word? It's not a RFP, an RFI. To have somebody come in and say, this is what it could look like, and in order to effectuate this, this is the type of zoning we would need.
Right. So our idea was actually to have a dual approach, to do both, so that we could have a piece of draft legislation or start the creation process for a piece of draft legislation and also have the request for expressions of interest. And then pick and choose the things that we want to make sure that the legislation meshes.
And also, the more, the more information we get, the better. And it also sends a signal to investors that, you know, listen, this is, we've been talking about it, and we know we're going to do it.
I agree, but I think it can't, it's got to be combined. Both of them have to be combined.
Promising that we're doing anything.
Of course, right.
No one's guaranteeing we're even going to do what's...
By examining the zoning, you are taking control.
Correct. We're taking control, and we're trying to recognize what the best ideas for downtown.
The request for information, we're not saying to a developer, oh, yeah, you can do this. We're not guaranteeing a thing.
I think it's, right, exactly. But I think it's important for developers to, this is stuff we've talked about, and now we're putting it to foot, putting it...
And moreover, we're not talking about anything shovel-in-a-ground any time soon.
No.
This is a long-term analysis.
Wow, is, are we going to be working with the planning board on doing this?
Yes.
If I read the emails correctly?
Yes, it involves the process. In fact, Greg is...
And we had a couple meetings that we...
Greg is...
To draft, okay. And the boards will be looking at it before anything goes out.
That's fine, I'm all good.
I get, well, I mean, I don't need to say this, everybody's agreement, but the point is, people look at Pleasantville, they say to me, and I'm sure they say to all of you, look what's happening in Pleasantville. Look at the restaurants, look at the housing that's going up. Why can't we do that here? We're not saying we're doing it here, but at the same time, you know, it's not the worst thing in the world to show them that. Actually, we're thinking about it, we're taking steps, we're not doing anything yet, but like, this is how it gets started.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's not too much in, yes.
It doesn't cost us anything to do this, and it doesn't commit us to anything.
Not yet.
Right, sorry.
Not yet, well, not yet.
No, and one of the things...
Would this be funded out of the Summit Greenfield money?
Yes, that's...
And have we received that money?
Yes.
I mean, that's, we need it to benefit the downtown. This is probably one of the most appropriate...
I don't, I don't know that I want to use one and a half million dollars.
No, my gosh, no.
No, we're not, dude.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. It's a total chuck-up.
Now's a good segue. You'll be my son.
I'm going to quit my musical job and...
Now's a good segue. I think we should talk about sidewalks, though, maybe, just because we're talking about two million and a half dollars.
Oh, okay, right. So Bob, Bob's here? So...
No.
Please join us.
No, I'm not, I'm not, Doug.
You know, which hotels use me?
No, you want me to stay for the shuttle.
Okay.
The shuttle?
Wait, 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 it's okay, then you don't have to leave yet.
The sidewalk is easy. I think this one is a good meeting.
Yeah, so, Bob, try the table.
It's about the one and a half million dollars.
Yeah. So there are four different change orders that are before the board tonight. Two of them regarding Boswell are the engineering change orders. And they're actually items that we have already included estimates in our change order section of our Excel.
Where is the, where is the, do we have the Boswell report in here?
Yes, we did. The Boswell report's here.
In this?
Yes, yes, it's in here.
It's this one. It's underneath the invite for the other thing.
You know what, though? Okay.
Talking about the, we were just discussing the date here.
Yeah, so within...
Where's the financials?
Yeah, yeah.
There is no financials.
They're not here. That's it. Because the financials haven't changed.
Can I see the financials?
Sure. They'll give me tons.
All right, go ahead, Bob. Surely, Bob.
Does she have it?
Let me take that just in case.
Okay.
Do you want to go over the change orders?
Yeah, very interesting. Okay. So the four change orders, the first two are for Boswell Engineering. And we're trying to say, and I'll just give you copies of the Excel in two seconds. We had included between 150 and 200, actually, Bob Dearie put 200,000. Yeah, he had put $200,000 for change orders for traffic design. There were some ADH streetscape and some drainage that we knew were coming down the pike. And the first step of that is these Boswell Engineering changes. So these, so Boswell Change Order Number Two and Number Three are actually encompassed within the $200,000 that we've already set aside in, within the change order.
Which you bumped up to set aside.
Yeah, that we bumped up to set aside.
Yeah, that's good.
The third one is, there is a granite engraving that's the compass with the quote on it that goes on the historical society.
Gold West Young Man.
Yeah, it's, it's not that, but...
Oh, West Young Man. I know, it was whatever else. Just teasing.
Yeah, but along those lines, though. And that is...
Why is that a change order? That was something we discussed previously.
Because we took it out of the contract. There were certain items that ELQ, that ELQ included that were like the bronze plaques that were just exorbitantly expensive.
How much is it?
$4,000.
I recommend $4,600, just for the contingency now.
Okay, $4,600 for that one. And the last one has to do with the installation of the sidewalks between Bishoff and Maple. So the board had already approved the granite curbing and...
We're just extending it.
We put it back in there, right?
Right, we had already put it back in.
How much is that?
Well, that was done already. We put that back.
That was done already.
The granite paving we put back. The granite curbing we put back in.
We're coming for the future if we want to do the sidewalks.
But not the actual sidewalks.
But now we should...
Sidewalks and lining.
Right.
But we decided to put that back in, so what I did, as we used, I used the base option, the 4,000, that was including the placement of topside alone. That was going to be put in anyway.
Right.
Part of the 120. So what we did was, Jill and I, we decided to go with two options. So what I did was, I see what the cost was total for the concrete sidewalk, the lining and the conduits. It was about $65,060, so we backed out 4. No one would have paid that anywhere. What we did, we got cost about $5,660, that's with the decorative lighting. Keep in mind, it's only two decorative lights. Lighting's very expensive, because you have the light, the footing, the conduits.
Did we need the lights?
Oh, yeah, good, good point. So that's why he did number, yeah.
And then what I did was, I just did, and that cost, just for the sidewalk, which, as you can see, is only $16,500. Now, what we were thinking, and Jill came up with the idea, and it's a great idea, is that we were thinking of putting the lights, decorative lights, along the utility poles.
So in other words, they're the black, long-armed...
Whoa.
As opposed to putting the decorative lights in the bases with the footings, we can put them along roadway, which is on the west side of the road.
Will they let us do that? I thought we're not allowed to put anything on the...
Wait, the utility poles, we would be replacing those lights anyway.
Can I just ask you a question? By the way, let's just finish this.
We're going to finish this conversation first. And what's the, what's the cost differential when you do it that way?
Well, if you put the mast arms and the LED fixtures on it, I did some research today, Jill, it's about $1,200. And the substantial was...
$1,200 less, or $1,200...
$1,200 a piece.
Total, that's exponentially less.
DPW can do that.
Can I just ask you?
They can put it right on the utility poles.
Are there lights there now? I can't remember.
Yes, there are lights there. They're not LEDs, but there are lights. And so it tends to be on the...
I just don't want, like, neighbors won't be complaining we're adding lights.
No, 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 no. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to...
If we're replacing those lights, we can use the cleaner, greener money we had for those lights, too.
The lockout we had from that brand.
From the bus.
That's great. How much we have, yeah?
$10,000 bucks?
About $12,000.
That's a lot of lights.
That's great.
So, well, it's not a lot of decorative light poles, but it's a lot of...
They have to be existing lights, though.
Yeah, no, 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 so, yeah.
The ones on the utilities. Just so you know, from King Street, from King Street, I did just a little count, from King Street up to Bishoff, you have 10 lights along the poles. So that'd be about $12,000, $12,500.
We could use that money right there.
It's a lot less expensive.
And we could use those dollars and reallocate them.
That's a great idea. And you, will it look nice? Will it look good, you think?
You know, we're not, I tried to find some sort of decorative lights. They don't make much. It's basically just aluminum, crushed aluminum. You can get them in black and different colors, but they still don't look too bad.
So what do we need authorization for, just to do the sidewalk?
Before we leave this conversation, I would like to bring something up and seriously talk to you about it. So I'm looking at the financials.
We can just finish the...
Yeah, let's finish the sidewalk. Well, sidewalk is part of the approval process, and I want to talk about what's left in contingency, because we're talking about taking money out of contingency.
But that's part of why we're talking about...
And so I'm talking, I'm looking at the numbers now. So we had a budget of $1.161 million in contingency. And we have actually spent $976,000 already for contingency. Yes, okay? Included in, leaving between now and November of 2019, which is a year and two months, all right? Only leaving $185,000 in contingency. And I think that is a very risky, risky thing to do. And I'm just saying, 180, we've already spent. It hasn't even been a year in project, we've already spent a million bucks.
I know.
And so my question is, my question to you is, my question to you is that, I get that we want to add it back in, I totally think it'd be great for the people that are down there, that future development, I have no problem with the sidewalks. But we, what I have not seen, or I'm looking at this $185,000, which is, I don't have a calculator with me, but 185 out of...
It's 16% left.
No, 14 million. It's like, normally, at this point in the project, we've got a whole...
Well, that's different.
Almost as long, 50%. They're saying we've only been building so far 37%.
I think you have to look it up, and the answer is, where are the contingency?
We are paid so far, we are 30%.
Right, that's 20% most is underground.
We are 30% of the way through the payment of the project, and we are 90% used up on contingency that we took.
Right, but I don't know, I don't know what contingency is.
This is very risky. But I think most of the contingency is things we can't see, which is infrastructure underground, which is basically done. There's always something.
If we were able to finish the conversation, what we would have said, and the reason I said, now's a good time for Bob to talk about the sidewalks, when we're talking about the 1.5 million, is that what we were going to say is that if, I think, what was it, the deal was that either if we don't have the contingency left over for these particular sidewalks, we'll just take it out of the 1.5 million. The question is whether people, what's the number, was it 16,000 or was it closer to...
16,000.
16,000. Whether people think that building sidewalks over there is a good use of the 1.5 million.
I have no problem with sidewalks. I love sidewalks. I'm talking about a project. So you're saying, so, but then if we should do that, then what I think we should do is we should pay it out of the 1.5 million, and if there's contingency left, reimburse that account for the 1.5 million. I think leaving $185,000 in contingency on a $14 million project with 8,56,000 left to spend is really, really risky.
But you're also, you're also, you're looking at the numbers, the way you presented, it's true, like, it sounds crazy. If you were building, let's say, a building, and the cost of the building was $14 million, and 33% is done, you'd say, that's crazy. But you're also, you're also, you're looking at the, the numbers, the way you presented, it's true, like it sounds crazy. If you were building, let's say a building, and the cost of the building was $14 million and 33% is done, you'd say that's crazy. I mean, the math obviously doesn't line up. But when you consider the fact that we're pretty much done with the infrastructure, right? And I don't think it's unreasonable to think that the contingency is gonna be used.
I use the same magical thinking on the firehouse where an equal size.
Did you have as much infrastruc, did you have as much infrastructure at the firehouse?
We were, yes, it was a $14 million project.
I understand that, but look at the miles, look at the size.
It's, it's, in some ways, it was, it was equally complex because of all the wetlands and all the land moving and all the stuff, so, and the drainage. So all I'm just saying is...
It's not, it's not. Look at the length you're going.
It's, but it doesn't matter. We were very conservative at a certain point and we ended up using every, and I, and we were way more conservative. We were something like 7.5%. I use the same logic, trust me. I'm like, we're out of the ground, we're out of the ground. I use the same logic. I understand, but there was still more.
Hold on, I have a question, Hal. This is, I think, Rob, refresh my recollection. When Rob broke out the contingency, did he break out the contingency for each piece of the project? So we're talking about $200,000 contingency for X.
No.
So, so we just did, he just the entire thing?
Yes.
So there's no way, and I think that's, again, that's a relevant question, to say, well, I was basing that contingency on 60% of that might have been for the infrastructure and 40% for the...
Streetscape.
Streetscape. I'm making it up, that's not the right number.
Fine.
But he did not do that, so we can't even look back to see.
No, but I, I, and, and we're not gonna know until everything comes home to roots, but I think what you can take a look at is, well, but let's follow it through. Take a look at ELQ, who is the lion's share of the recipient of the funds for this project. We're 13 out of 24 months in, okay? And we've paid out 31%. Out of these payments that we've made to ELQ encompasses change order items.
I get encompasses and we've used up...
No, 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 so you don't, right, so you, we've double dipped, is my point. These numbers represent double dipping because we've charged the contingency line...
Well, I would like to have clarity from Rob Dearie, because I can't believe that Rob Dearie would say, when he puts ELQ change orders down here, culvert, temporary student, decorative pole, coned, blah, 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 that he's also counting them up here. I would like confirmation before...
He's gonna change it on the next one.
It's going to be changed to the next one, because it's something that is negative.
At bottom, to me, I mean, my, my position is at bottom.
Because, Hal, we wanted to see what the change orders were along the way, but the change orders are continued within, but they are, they are, they are calc...
But the change order shouldn't be... Some of them are...
They were calculated.
Well then, well then what he should have done is the budget should actually have been increased commensurately. If he has not increased the budget, then what's happening is we're overstating the percent complete.
Yes.
So the math here makes it even riskier. And if I look at this, we started paying Boswell Construction in May of 2017 for the first payment to get them mobilized. Let's say construction started in like July.
But they're a lump sum, $1 million.
They're a lump sum for 24 months.
Right.
I think we are beyond the 24 months. I think by the time this project ends, we're gonna be beyond and they're gonna be coming back at us for money.
And that, and that's very possible, that there will be some monies owed to Boswell because, because we've gone extra.
Because of time.
But there are also going to be months that, that they're not billing us because they're not doing any work. So...
Well, I, you know...
Between Thanksgiving and the first of the year.
I think $185,000, either this should be cleaned up and distributed so we can actually see the accurate net numbers rather than double dipping.
Okay, well this is something that literally we just recognized.
Okay, let me, let me step in for a second. I agree with Hal's overall analysis, but for the sake of this conversation, we're talking $16,000. And to a certain extent, money is fungible, whether it comes from the 1.5 million or it comes from here, in my view, is $16,000 coming out of the pot, irrespective where it comes, because whether it's ours from the 1.5 or not, or here, it's an asset.
The number on the spreadsheet is not $16,000.
It's an asset.
I have no problem spending $16,000 on sidewalks. I'm looking at...
Tremendous asset.
South Greeley curving and pavement, Bishop to Maple, 120.
Right, we already approved that.
We already put that back in.
All right, so the only thing is the ELQ submissions. I think, I think that if it's possible, and you can have to let me know, but if we have the money, it could be paid out of the 1.5 million and then if there's contingency left over at the end of the day, we can reimburse that.
If that's how the board wants to do that, I would check with Rob Dearie.
It's six of one, to me, it's six of one.
No, because you don't, do you really wanna go over, over the budget on this?
I don't know if that's appropriate accounting.
Rob Dearie is recommending a different approach. I'd rather, I feel more comfortable going with our comptroller.
I agree with Hal's analysis, we need to have some real numbers, hard numbers.
Hard numbers, this is like crazy.
As to this particular issue, I think it's a simple one. It's $16,000 to make the downtown better, that's gonna be used, it's gonna be an asset, we do it, period.
I would like to have a memo explaining exactly, so, in this packet, can you show me where the $16,000 is?
This is better.
I don't know, I'm just going to, like, we wouldn't need to reimburse ourselves.
Do we keep the contingency or we use the 1.5?
I don't know, but my point is we wouldn't need to reimburse ourselves, because we're not gonna touch the 1.5 unless we don't have any contingency.
I see the Boswell, okay, keep going.
Right.
Right, that's what...
So there's no, so Hal's question is, would never happen. Because we would never reimburse ourselves for the 1.5, because we're not gonna use the 1.5 if we still have contingency. It's gonna come out of contingency first.
Wait, wait, it's only if we need it, that it'll come out and then there's nothing reimbursed. No, what are you telling me? I'm sorry, it's construction costs.
I have the estimates in the back. I use the unit cost right out of the...
Are you looking at the right thing, Hal?
Yeah, that's a, that's a construction cost, that's not design.
I don't know, I think $16,000 is well worth it to put in those sidewalks. Oh, this looks like your handwriting?
Yeah, so those are your...
$16,000, correct?
Yeah, that's construction.
Yeah, $16,000.
That is well worth it to spend that.
I'm looking at 60, 60,000, no?
One six, 16.
We're talking about doing the lights.
Especially if we can take the other money out of the, like, the other grant.
What's the next thing on the, uh...
Right, so it lowers that amount. So let's go back to this. Can you please ask Rob Dearie to tighten this up?
He has to go through, he has to go back over the invoices and pull out.
Okay, so can we just, just sum this up?
Yes.
$16,000 to...
$16,500.
Okay, 500, to extend that sidewalk, which number includes replacing the lights.
Lights, another 12, lights, another 12.
New lights, new... Oh, another 12, 100.
But that's coming out, that's coming out of...
But that can be back into...
No, she can't use that.
...an opportunity to change the clean energy grant to reallocate the, um, the monies to be used for the LED lights to this project.
Okay.
So what would be helpful is a resolution from the town board to ask in favor of doing that, so I can look into it.
Why don't you type up a memo?
Exactly, and we will...
Yeah.
Just type up a resolution.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Or just, we could do an oral resolution, let's just get it done.
No, type up a memo and we can do it, vote on it, that works.
We don't need a memo, we're doing it tonight, it's not that complicated. Not everything needs to be, uh, complicated. What's the next thing on the agenda? We need to keep the agenda moving.
Yes.
We need to be here 12 o'clock at night debating.
I don't wanna be here 12 o'clock at night, but I don't wanna be in a situation with $186,000 in contingency with $9 million to go.
That's a separate issue, that's a separate, it's a big issue.
Excuse me.
In the 10 meetings that you've been so far this year, they seem to go a lot faster.
Oh, Rob, Rob, Rob. I have, the only thing I've said so far is talking about this, so please.
Jill, Jill.
I'm sorry, Rob, but, but...
Rob.
Please.
We have an 8:30 town board meeting.
Children.
I'm not, listen, Jeremy, this isn't children. We have an agenda, we have to stick to the time limit, and we have a town board...
Excuse me, because I am raising a concern with $186,000 left in contingency, with $9 million to go, and you call that not being on agenda?
What I, what I call, is that we need to move on.
Rob, I got, I'm just saying.
Move forward, move on.
I, we're moving on. I've asked for one thing, which is Rob Dearie to clean up the financial reports.
Next thing on the agenda. He's going to say that, and we're gonna do a resolution tonight, and we're gonna move on. What's the next item on the agenda?
All right, drive safely, please. Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, good idea.
That's, that's done.
Okay, let's, um, one more thing, Sabrina, Sabrina, let's talk about the, uh, the shuttle.
Use it.
So we're gonna go to the last item on the agenda, second to last.
Second.
So it's a request from Chapel Crossing on the shuttle?
Thank you.
Yep.
So the shuttle, the shuttle that they have, basically, nobody's driving. They have a school bus that sits in front of Chapel Crossing, letting out admissions. And by the way, if you talk to traffic or transportation, they have a shortage of bus drivers. The other day I saw Seth Corwin driving a bus. They have a shortage of bus drivers. Meanwhile, they got a bus driver wasting, sitting in a frigging minibus that nobody's using. It's the most ridiculous, energy inefficient thing, and it's, it's, it's silly that, that they're doing that. So they're asking for relief.
Right, so they're asking for relief for something they're required to do, that would cost them how much to maintain?
They're asking for, this will be clear also, they're asking for relief from something that we actually didn't require them to do that. The planning board, we actually required them to do it when the retail was done. The planning board decided to change it when there was housing in the Coopla Building, which on its face sounded like a great idea. However, now that it's actually in use and, and we see what's happening in reality, very few people are using it and it's a total waste.
I think that's fair.
How much of the...
Very few people are using it now, right, exactly.
I think it's fair, but I think we look at it...
But nobody's talking about the future, we're talking about right now.
I think that's fair, but I think we also look at it holistically. I'm making up a number, it costs $5,000 a week, $5,000 a month. Again, I don't know what the dollar amount is. While we wanna work together and there's give and take, I think we need to look at this at a bigger picture, because they have a burden that we're gonna relieve them on of, and there needs to be an equal give and take. Now, I know that your response is gonna be, they're willing to work with us, but I don't wanna be put in a position until I know holistically what we're providing them and in exchange they're providing us. I'm not opposed to it.
So you're saying basically, give us money to reimburse, because you're supposed to be spending this money and you're not gonna use it.
I'm, I'm saying, or, or something else, or mitigate something else.
Right.
Because it could be a win for everybody. So you mitigate something, we don't wanna just waste your money and we certainly don't wanna damage the environment by running a bus for nothing, but you can mitigate it back and still be a winner.
Yes.
But that's why I say look at it holistically, there's probably things that we can look at.
Well, yeah, it is, but, but as, as we talked about, there's gonna be traffic improvements eventually coming down by the highway, right? They're gonna be asked to pay for that. I understand the whole give and take, I get that, but to, to, to spend, I think they're spending $100,000 a month, like...
For the bus?
They're spending a ridiculous amount of money for the...
And they didn't wanna participate in the shuttle?
No.
The shuttle that we would give them, there's not a chance of health. I think, what did they say? The shuttle was worth 30,000 bucks?
It's not $100,000 a month. By the way, you're, you, you know, you, you've, you need to get, you need, you need to get an update on where we are with the bus, but that's okay.
The hand gesture does not help, but I hear you. I know you're trying to reach out.
What, your hand gesture?
No, I'm mimicking yours, so I know you're trying to reach out, it's not helpful.
Okay, but what, what happens is, you, you really, you don't really know where we are with the shuttle bus, that's okay, you missed a lot of things.
Stop, enough, just deal with the issue.
But the, the point, the, the point is though, that, I don't know what they're spending on the bus, but they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to do a lot of improvements down by the highway, and we're gonna want them to pay for that, and money is money, and there's no reason to waste it, especially when it could be put to a better use. Maybe it could be improvements in traffic forming arts center, maybe it could be improvements down by the highway.
Right, I just wanna have a better, more holistic before we say goodbye.
So, the point is that when we worked, when we're working together to make it a better project for everybody, excuse me, I don't know what you're saying.
That's a potential, so it's more, kind of, I, I, I...
Yeah.
Sabrina, I have a question for you. I have a question.
Well, it just wanna make sure we're talking about temporarily, because it is a condition.
Right.
I always want to talk about temporarily.
Yes, so Sabrina, how, what is the percentage occupancy of the Coopla Building, do you know?
All of the workforce and affordable are occupied. I do not think that there's a large portion of the market rate that are rented.
Is it because it's not... It's not, it's just the middle of a construction site, Joe's gonna pay market rate for that.
And part of the, the reasonable aspect of this ask is because it is a construction site. There's no retail that is open, they are spending money, they are not doing any advertising to, 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 for people to ride the bus. We received one call this week about is it running, and we had the, the schedule that we created.
Nobody knows where the...
Stops were on that schedule?
I'm gonna take the conch.
Yes, please.
Can we, can we, um, I'm not piggy, but, um, it's not the kid, was it piggy?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was piggy. But anyway, uh, anyway, can we just even do a hiatus, for lack of a better term, freeze it for just a couple of weeks to...
I have a...
Not, no, a couple of months, I'm not ready to make that big of a jump.
Until retail's open.
I have...
But I'm not ready to make the big of a jump, because again, I don't want, I know that in good faith we're already working together, but it's a lot of money, I know it's not a hundred grand a month, but let's just have a, get a better holistic view of what things we wanna change and work on and mitigate that we know we wanna speak to them about, and, and put, pen to paper and say, this is what we're willing to do to work together, so that we're not just relying on good faith.
I have, I have one other thought. I'm, I'm okay with holding off until the retail is, um, open on that, giving them a hiatus. Could we consider, uh, you know, because there probably are some people living in those units now who do utilize it, not a lot, but a few people, can we ask them to potentially pay for an Uber to take them from there into town?
The letter suggests that they're gonna, that's a given, they have to do that.
Right, so is there gonna pay for that, which provides for the transportation for the people living there? No retail's open now, so it's not like anyone's going, I think I'm okay with that, have them cover that and...
This is honestly government ads, I understand what you're saying, Jeremy, I agree 100%. It doesn't necessarily have to be like anything memorialized or like, I hear what your point is, but the point is, this is government ads, worse. This is a bus that's nobody's using and they're forced to do it just because, because it's, it's there, it's silly, it makes no sense on a lot of levels.
We're just discussing, we're just discussing, for example, again, money, money is...
It hits people off, and you see a bus idling outside Chapel Station, people can outside turn and enjoy it.
Well, they can turn it off, but my, my, I, I, but, but when we're talking just moments ago about $16,000 sidewalk, one is nothing to do with the other, we can't say we're gonna pay the money, but money is fungible, right? Money, it doesn't really matter with a reason where it's coming from. And we have needs in our community that can be met or mitigated with their assistance that they're not required to, and I'm sure in good faith that we will work together going forward, so I don't object to a very brief staying of this obligation, and very well, they say, fine, they should, if, if they get the CFO and everything's ready to go in March, making up the date doesn't make a difference, they save themselves $10,000 a month, again, I don't know the number, that, those are real numbers, we can work and figure things out, so instead of just giving them wholesale pass, even if it's revisited in two weeks, revisited in the next session.
We have, I agree on that, we have, we have needs that are at Chapel Crossing that are actually being addressed. I can give you a couple, like traffic mitigations at Whipplewood, they're not required to do that at all.
Correct, you're correct.
What about a, a walkway that goes from...
But, but we don't know exactly, it's a long term, what's going on.
Adden Dell to Roy Brook Road. They're not required to do that at all. What about the fact that they've been incredibly accommodating to the people on Roy Brook Road? They're not required to do that at all. We have traffic improvements coming to Soul Mill. We have ADA issues we want them to take care of at the Chapel Performing Arts Center. There's a lot of things on site that they have expressed a willingness to work with us on, and every time they come to us and, and ask us to do something, we should reciprocate, because that's how it works. I, I understand what you're saying, but this is the type of relationship that we've tried to cultivate with them, that we work together, and when you have a bus that nobody's using and they're just continuing to do it, it's just...
That's why I don't object, but I wanna have the answer.
I think as long as they resolve to pay for an Uber for the residents there who need it, who are, need to go to downtown Chapel, not to go into the city, but you know, what the muscle would be doing.
Well, no, they may need to do, but they may need to commute, so they may be working somewhere else.
It's just going back and forth.
Train, train, transportation.
To the train, it's to the train. The bus wasn't taking them anywhere else, it was taking them to the train.
No, no, right.
May I make a recommendation? If you're all in favor of resolving to allow them to put a stay on the bus service, provided they provide transportation, why don't you pass a resolution to do that and then direct communication with my office as to how those people who wish to utilize the service of a bus, but there's no bus running between now and CFO for the retail, that there's a content, that I can work out that process.
CFO for the whole retailer, CFO for Whole Foods.
I'm not ready to jump to, you know, if, if retail CFO was in March, I mean, again, I don't know if that's what it is.
I don't know. I, I, I say that just for example of time.
Headway, April, please.
No, 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 it's multiple buildings, the CFO be issued specially over all the different units that they're building.
Okay, so that needs to be the... Okay, so the town board would approve it. Is it a way that we could do it, you know, every two months and that way we can take and revisit it, just for a month?
That's fine.
Month to month is...
Every two months is fine.
We are making, we are making progress with the electric shuttle. We are making progress with the electric shuttle, and I think we're gonna be able to strike a deal with them, that's gonna be, basically allow us to run the electric shuttle for free as, as, whenever we need to use it, and, and then we may wanna start that sooner, and they're gonna have to fund that.
So my, my suggestion, I think you said it, or whoever said it, let's do it through October.
We're saying we should be in a position when our shuttle to start.
So month to month, with some deck renewal every month.
Let's do it through October, we visit in October, let's, let's do it.
I have no problem with it, I'm just saying right now.
That's a good idea.
So the planning board will have to consider this as well, because one of their conditions is approved.
Right, but it would be helpful for the planning board to have a direction, a recommendation from you, because it was...
I think month to month is something that's acceptable.
Stay month to month as long as they provide transportation for people living there who need it to...
And why don't we have them use Pleasantville, why don't we have them use the Pleasantville cap?
Yeah.
That's the point.
I think they should go out to Martin's, determine where they're going.
Okay, but, but there has to be, but I don't want this to be an issue where, you know, they, they need to set up an account where people can use it and...
They have to go out, why would they?
Well, no, 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 let them work with me to figure out what it would take to make sure the people who would want to use this bus right now...
Well, it makes sense.
Look, who cares? They could frankly have one of their own employees drive people if they wanted to.
Yeah, exactly, as long as they have transportation to that train station, it doesn't matter how they're doing it. We need to know how they plan to do that.
I don't, like, as long as... Sabrina's comfortable, I don't care. Safe.
Okay, and, and they have to give proper notice to the residents as well. This can't be like the shuttle bus disappears and then nobody has any idea how to do this. So, although I'm okay with the month to month, I just think that October is a little tight to get that information out, unless you're doing it October 15th to November 15th. I think you have to give residents notice and we need to see, you know, work out the king's, and I don't know when the planning board...
Fine, then I, I don't even oppose, this, if you wanna do now till October 15th, I, I, I don't care, then we'll, starting October 15th, so they can have a stay until October 15th?
Yeah, the residents need to have notice.
That's fine, the next or two weeks is no, no big deal.
Dark of night, no, there's no show.
Right.
So that, that's fine, a stay through Octo, uh, not October 15th, sorry, November 15th.
Yeah, October through November 15th.
It's, I, that, okay, that's fine.
And then we'll write it from there.
Okay.
Great. All right.
Back to your agenda.
Back to the agenda.
What's the last, can you finish one more thing? Is charitable funds resolution?
Oh, we have a couple more.
To you.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have a lot of stuff.
We do the top, the chap pack, the donation?
Yes, so, um...
Why is Josh here though, just because of...
Well, Josh is here for the public hearing on the condos, but he's also, he can also answer any questions that you guys have. Yeah, sorry, on the CAI tax mapping, want to speak to that?
Certainly.
Come join us.
If you want to.
At your peril. Seems to be my catchphrase. So, everything we always want to know about tax mapping, but we're afraid to ask.
So our CAI tax mapping company, um...
Thank you.
No, no, I'm interested, go ahead.
What happens is, um, they complete our tax maps every year, so whenever we have a change of title, we get the meets and bounds, we send that off to them, and, uh, every year for our final rule, they provide updated tax maps. Um, there's between 250 and 300 transactions per year. They also are working in conjunction with Planning Department and Sabrina with, um, an end user website, and they're trying to integrate assessment data with, uh, planning and zoning data so that it's more user friendly for our residents to go on and take a look at night or when we're not open. Um, so that's the other piece of that. Um, when we agree to a three-year contract, they always give us a discount as opposed to going from year to year. Uh, that's what we've always done with them since they took over from Soul, a bunch of years ago. Um, so it's a standard contract, it's...
It's a good point.
Am I happy with their services?
Their service is very good, yes.
How are, how are property sales tracking, mortgage tax tracking this year?
Was that one of them? All you, all you afraid to ask about tax mapping and, you know, all you afraid to ask?
And now you can feel comfortable to just go launch right now.
Yeah, I was just wondering how the mortgage, how is the mortgage tax election going this year? Is it a higher, lower flex?
That would be a question for Rob, we don't...
Oh, you don't see that data? No.
You know what, um, so, starting, starting next Tuesday, we start our budget, tentative budget, so Rob will be here for the duration, the Tuesday and the Wednesday, so you guys can go to...
Okay.
Can we talk about the charitable funds resolution while you're here?
Should we just start from the top?
Yeah, sure, charitable funds resolution.
Okay.
Are you sure you have charitable funds resolution?
I mean, I read all the emails you sent.
All of them.
My understanding is, the county's out, Scarsdale has, uh, pulled back their, their resolution, um...
Why me this again?
So the IRS came out.
The county is out.
You may recall that the governor's, uh, budget bill approved legislation that authorized municipalities and school districts to set up charitable funds, so individuals could make tax payments in amount, 95% of their tax bill, the fear to be made could then deducted. IRS at the time questioned it, IRS now came out with a regulation saying it's not valid. There's a consort, and Westchester County and Scarsdale were the two entities in Rybrook that had authorized these charitable funds, everyone else was waiting. They've now de-authorized or unauthorized those funds, so none of these charitable funds exist. There's a consortium of municipalities who are looking to retain an attorney to evaluate challenging the IRS regulation, and thinking, does the town want to buy into that? I think the town's contribution is a thousand dollars.
So, I, yeah.
Sure, but I'm just curious, isn't the state challenging it too? County challenging each other, are we just being redundant?
Cuomo's already suing the government.
Are we just being redundant just to make ourselves look good in the eyes of the public, but if it's already being done?
No, but I think if there's more cows and... But the state's doing it.
Right, so...
I think you can take that, I think, but I don't know enough about... I mean, I don't really have a sense of details either, but I think that Cuomo's, Cuomo's attack is more about the fact that it was targeted to blue states and it was that type of line. This is specific tax attorneys challenging the IRS ruling, because apparently, you know, it's allowed for like private schools, but not for public schools, like they have very specific arguments that a tax attorney is making, saying that the, that the IRS ruling is like arbitrary and capricious. It's different than what Cuomo is challenging. Cuomo is more of a... Cuomo's is more of a global type of thing.
Obviously, we have the discretion if we think this is going downhill to bail or fund more should they need it.
It's a thousand dollars.
You're limited to a thousand, you could always withdraw, yes.
So we're only, our only obligation would be a thousand dollars?
Right.
Yeah.
And most of the emails that, you know, supervisors sent to each other is pretty much like that, like it's only a thousand dollars, like what are we missing here?
Yeah, right, a thousand dollars today, ten thousand dollars.
Well, not even that, they weren't, they're just like, basically just, you know, they just...
The attorney's a reputable, attorney's a reputable attorney.
Well, they have any time supervisor, they can write, ten, twelve, fifteen, whatever.
The mayors are involved as well, thirty-four entities in Westchester?
That's right. Oh, they're involved in, okay.
Well, everybody's in for a thing.
The mayors are actually, weren't leading the charge. Supervisors are just like, we have no idea, we have no idea what we're even doing.
Now then.
Yeah, okay, so.
You're just like most circles, like fused.
We're in for that.
And there's a sample resolution in your packet.
Which is provided by them.
Yeah.
All right, now we're done with this, right?
All right, now, just real quick, there's gonna be a resolution for the exception of donation for children's programming, a chap pack in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and another thirty-two thousand dollars for advertising that a donor has very generously and graciously given to us. There's authorization to grant a bid for public works uniforms, this is part of parcel of our contract. The next is authorization to solicit qualifications and price proposals for the Millwood Water Treatment Plan. Our contract with Suavez is up, with United Water is up as of the end of this year, and we are seriously looking at that contract and seeing whether or not it is fiscally feasible for us to take the operation in-house. So we're gonna grant proposals, take a look and see what they cost and see whether or not...
Are you talking about hiring Morse employees to manage that?
Yes, we would hire them straight. Now that our employees actually contribute to healthcare, it actually may end up being more economically feasible for us to take it in.
Okay.
We'll take a look at the numbers and see what works. Green light source, green light license, sorry. This is, was sent to us from Osning. It's a resolution in support of granting driver's licenses to anyone regardless of their immigration status, on the theory that we should have safe drivers no matter what.
Which is what it is now.
No, you can't get a driver's license if you're...
They're legal immigrants, I think, in the traffic stations.
No, I feel like they're...
I don't know, I've never dealt with them. I don't do traffic.
I don't think, I think you can.
There's the topic for the authorization for the Chamber of Commerce to use the taxi stand.
Yes, Rob, you wanna talk about that?
Well, basically, we have talked about that already, but this is an authorization to actually formally approve it. When we did the RFP for the taxi companies, we did not include the taxi stand. So they have no right to use it. The taxi companies, by the way, dine to use it. And we've talked about having the chamber use it, so this will be an authorization to let the chamber use it. And in fact, they're gonna be talking about it tomorrow's meeting. Taxi company would like to use it too, just so that they could, you know, have a little place to sit and have a phone and...
At some point, the board may wanna consider doing this, only because we don't want them sitting in the cars, having them idle.
Right, and also they...
So in the winter...
They can sit in the Chapel Station too.
You know, I pass these guys in the...
That's taking seats away from a revenue-producing seat.
I pass these guys every day.
Still, you can't.
The problem there also happening is that people actually see the taxi stand and it's all closed up, and they think there's no taxi service.
We received...
So they're having it open.
We should put a sign.
Have we received a proposal from the Chamber of Commerce of how they would like to use that stand?
Yeah, well, how they would like to use it is, they basically, and it actually helps to have the taxi company in there, they would like to use it as, basically, it would be a chamber stand that the taxi, people could sit in and have a phone and chairs and stuff. And they would have brochures and anything else they wanna put in there, the chamber. And whenever the chamber wants to have a pop-up shop, they would be able to. So Friday, for example, if florist wants to sell flowers, they could do that.
Okay.
If another day, maybe another merchant wants to, you know, sell some wares, they would do that. It would be basically a location of a pop-up shop to take advantage of the train track, maybe just handing out brochures.
And where is the resolution?
Those windows are removable. Otherwise, could you make it so that there's a countertop for that?
Where's the resolution at?
No, I'm not talking about the window office, I'm talking about, you know, talking about in the summer, because you talk about a florist shop, but you'd agree if someone could walk up and the window is open.
But they do, they are, we could renovate it one day, but, I mean, the whole thing about the chamber using it, they don't have anybody that manages, so actually it'd be good to have the taxi company in there.
Okay, I just don't want that opening to be...
I just wanna take a look at the language. I mean, do we wanna limit hours or something? I really don't have a problem with it, but I just wanna make sure that it's...
It's number fourteen, it's just an authorization, no, no language in it.
No, no, I just, like, who's opening it, like, if the taxi?
Who's responsible for it?
Who's responsible for locking it, that kind of thing.
It just feels it's very kind of unclear and amorphous and...
We put together an agreement with them, that's for standards, if that's what you're looking for.
Taxi company is dying to get in there, so they would definitely, and Val's gonna be at the meeting.
Why? I just wanna know from an insurance perspective, you know, who's responsible? Who's gonna be responsible for it?
I think it needs to be articulated.
Yeah, I think that, it feels very amorphous, so do you think they could put more, can you put more meat around it?
Yes.
Just to make sure, I'd make sure that we have an agreement, they should have liability insurance?
Because basically, the taxi stand gets, it ultimately is used as a taxi stand in principle. It's almost skirting a fee for the taxi folk that they would otherwise pay if the chamber's not really gonna use it. So if the chamber's actively gonna use it, for example, florists, gifts, whatever it may be, that's fine, absolutely a different story, but if it's becoming, you know, three hundred days out of the year it's a taxi stand, then they're skirting having any financial obligation to use it as a stand.
Yeah, nobody proposed paying money with the taxi RP's anyway.
If they're dying to use it, they might be willing to, come winter...
Even if it's just electricity, if they put a heater on there for their guys to be able to sit, they all have, you know, they all have cell phones, they don't need a phone phone, just, you know, a heater or something.
More concrete, yes.
And I think there should be language about, you know, carrying liability insurance, I think there needs to be...
But also, you know, just, also think about this, when you, like Carla mentioned before, Whole Foods with car deliveries, and there's no question about it, you Uber Eats, that's what's people doing. Well, tomorrow at the chamber meeting, Val, the guy from Pleasantville Taxi's gonna be there, and he's gonna be specifically talking with Joe, the owner of Le Jardine, because he may do delivery for Le Jardine, like an Uber Eats type of thing. And he was actually be doing it for all the merchants, for the chambers. So, I mean, there can be a lot of synergy when these guys work together, not just with the space, but just...
Yeah, and I just wanna say that I, as long, and if they are gonna be doing food...
I actually mentioned that to Val, and he was the one who said that we could do delivery services.
Somebody gets sick, somebody gets salmonella, I do not, somebody like doesn't hold, gets things into the temperature, I do not want anything to do with that.
In concept, it's good, you want to put some structure to it.
But like Jeremy said also, like in two years from now, these lockers may just be like a norm, and the fact is, is like, we'd decide we wanna put lockers in there, like heated lockers or regular lockers, I mean, that may be... It could be with any food, it could just not be food, it could be also, you could, you may have picked up a present for your wife or somebody, and that's delivered, and you go to your locker, they give you the combination, you open it and you take out the present. That maybe, that's the way things are heading. That's the way Amazon's doing it, they're gonna have lockers probably at Whole Foods. I don't think anybody actually uses them yet.
The locker system is actually great, they have them at a lot of the museums down south, and it's basically an ever-changing code, that you set the code, that you wanna be put on the locker, you get a sign, and you just change it, and every time you open and close it, it resets. Works great.
When you get delivery at the Kupla Building, and the UPS guys put it in a locker.
Send you a text with the code.
And you get to tell, yeah, and they're, it's changed, but they want different sizes, depending on the size of your package.
Right.
Like aside your locker, just lockers.
So we're gonna table this until there's more definition, is that what we decided?
Yes, in concept, you're okay with it, unless it's some more...
Well, we gotta work in the taxi company to figure out how it's gonna be until, like...
Yep, so we'll work on it.
Okay.
Request for the independent assessment for NISIC, so this is an email that just came this afternoon from my cap folks.
They're like four or something.
Yeah, and it's for, yeah, and I looked at the date, and the date's for next Tuesday.
I think Ivy made a good point too. We don't even use NISIC, right? I mean, I know she asked that question, I didn't see an answer, but I'm quite sure we don't.
I think some of our commercial entities use NISIC.
Not totally within Con Ed?
No, we're not totally within Con Ed, I know that there's other companies, because they offer lower rates to some, I know the fire district was getting a lower rate.
But is that NISIC or is it?
Alternative providers.
Right, it was NISIC, no, it was absolutely NISIC, and I think there are several businesses in town.
Nicerta.
Nicerta.
No, Nicerta is New York State Energy, Nicerta is a government program. NISIC is a company.
Wait one second, it's...
I don't think, I personally don't think they have any issue, and I've never seen that trucks...
But I do think it's not so much for residences, I think it's much more for commercial properties. I don't think they're interested in the residential business. I haven't seen any of their trucks ever.
I know, I don't.
You wouldn't, they could truck out through Con Ed, they just do the power delivery, they negotiate the rate.
New York Power Authority.
No, NICO is the governing authority, I'm, NISIC is...
It is not...
No, we don't, and most residences don't, but...
It doesn't operate in Newcastle, it operates as of Yorktown and higher.
That was my understanding too, we can confirm that. I already know that also, by the way, from all this calls.
Because we've never had a NISIC call.
Right.
When our power goes out, it's only Con Ed, where Yorktown goes and does both. They were very upset because...
And they talk about them, of course.
Falls, you know, most of them.
We should, I mean, I don't think we have many, so I don't think it's, so what is the assessment that he's talking about?
Well, because the letter has to do with NISIC, but there was also...
Why don't we first find out if we even have any? We don't have any, it's irrelevant first.
Yeah, we don't even need to discuss it.
I just don't think that, Mike, because it gone out so those years, so it says, as an FYI, both NISIC and Con Ed will be appearing before the full Board of Legislators on October second. We expect NISIC to start at two o'clock, and NISIC to start about three. So although the letter says, yeah, it's weird, it's only an independent assessment of NISIC because they did such a poor job, not that, great, I guess everything's relative.
But the penalty fee.
He may have just sent it to, I mean, 'cause he covers areas that have NISIC, so he may have just sent it to all of his constituents and...
I think he's trying to take the lead with NISIC, but I think as far as Con Ed is concerned, I think the county has been doing a decent job taking the lead, you know, so I think Mike is just trying to fill the void with NISIC, but I still don't think we have any time, but we should check that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll check. Yeah, I think we're gonna table it.
Our number was up?
We just got it today.
The one before administrative items, next page.
The chief has asked for a declaration of surplus equipment, whatever, cars, and the next thing is the code red renewal, it's for the same price and term as we paid along. Yep, it is for eight thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars fifteen cents C U.
With the call?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's forty-three five nine, I was gonna say, God, that's inexpensive.
Don't we get a free mobile call with that?
Yes, we do.
We should do that. Do we do it this year? Last year, maybe we should do it before. We should do it before they renew, when's the renewal start?
December.
We should do it in November before, and then we could do another one.
Wanna just, you know, alert people to code red, which is safety?
Oh.
Alert people to code red, let them sign up. Remind them where our warning centers are for the winter, that kind of stuff.
Well, even if we do it for test, like, they just made a good point, if we have to go into dual stream, we could use it.
Yeah, that might be a really nice thing to do for that, that might be very helpful.
And we get to use it, do it free before the contract.
And then do it again in January, yeah, just remind people.
We should be doing it, we should be doing it every year, we really have it.
Well, just to make sure that it actually works, you know, because people are getting notified.
Especially last time we did, some people got like ten calls.
Yeah, it was, no, it's, yeah, it doesn't work on that. Okay, we ready to go into our council meeting?
Yeah, do a journey, a work session?
We do everything, as we went out of order.
Yeah, we did. You want a second there?
Second.
Favor, hi, so we're gonna sit here, we're gonna go the...
And we're going up there, I think.
Yep, we are gone. So welcome everybody to the town board meeting of Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Just had a work session sitting here, so we're gonna stay put. Here's, we have some announcements, chamber meeting tomorrow at Le Jardine, it's free, anybody can come if you want, there is a charge for that, that'd be from eight-thirty to ten, and we'll have an update regarding construction and some of the events that are planning for the autumn and holiday season, including going around town. Chapel Girl Scouts are forming new troops at Grafflin, Roy Brook, and West Orchard Elementary Schools. If interested, please attend the informational session on September twenty-seventh at West Orchard Elementary School Capitorium, six to seven-thirty P M. Chapel Children's Book Festival is this Saturday from ten A M. to four P M. at Bell School. The festival features over ninety authors, reading activities, food trucks, the great Chapel Bake Sale, Bubba Bus, and more. The Chapel Harvest Fest Pumpkin Patch, Saturday, October thirteenth, from eleven to three at the Saint, at the Church of Saint Mary the Virgin, next to Bell School. Games, pumpkin decorating, bake sale, and food. Pumpkin Patch will last until five P M. We have the Jordan Matter Book Launch and Presentation, Sunday, October fourteenth, from five to seven at the Chapel Performing Arts Center. And we have the Fall Festival, getting ahead of ourselves here, but that's Saturday, October twenty-seventh, from twelve to five at Getney Park, that's a, that's the, instead of Clark the Millwood, two-hundred-and-one celebration, Clark the Fall Festival. And that's it. As far as the Suavez report, you know, it's getting late, I'll do, I'll do an infrastructure and street skate update. Con Ed continues to move their wires to new poles, after all the wires are moved by Con Ed, Verizon and Altice, by, after all the wires are moved by Con Ed, Verizon and Altice, the old poles will be removed. We thank the utility companies for their cooperation. Besides your overhead wire work, there are many utility conduits underground that have issues that need to be addressed. One such area is in front of the Shell Station. We work in hard with Verizon to get the issue resolved, so work can be completed, steel plates removed, and the road paved prior to the book festival on Saturday. Excavation for granite curbing has started on North Greeley, and we decide tonight to restore sidewalks there, so there'll be brand-new sidewalks installed on North Greeley near Bishop Avenue. Next week, after the Chapel Children's, what?
To Maple.
To Maple. Next week, that's, it's good, thanks. Next week, after the Chapel Children's Book Festival, excavation installation of the granite curbing will start by Washington Avenue to Woodburn. Storm drainage improvements will be completed by the end of the month, and repaving finished by Thanksgiving. Hopefully that's still accurate.
Hope so.
However, the onset of winter with the lake curb and sidewalk installation. Let's see, tonight we approved the issuance of an RFP for a zoning study to look into zoning revisions in downtown Chapel, and we continue to work with the planning board on these issues. Let's see, we also tonight authorized to send out an RFP for a traffic consultant to study down by the railroad tracks, and what else do we got? We had a bear presentation last night, that video will be available, and then we'll include it in the newsletter, and post it online. And we start a budget meeting next week, and Millwood with the train trestle banner, And Millwood with the train trestle banner. We have some banners going up on the old rusted train trestle on Route 100. And we received permission from Westchester County to hang the banners. And now we're just waiting for a permit from New York State. What's the matter?
Good. Who's the banner saying? Welcome to Millwood?
One side says, welcome to Millwood, the other side...
Did you call Greg? Did you?
No, we'll wait till it goes up.
No, no, he knows. I see him at Rockyville town. But the other side's going to say Millwood 100, 200 year anniversary, just because we have that gigantic banner, which was made for the train trestle, and we never hung it. So decide when you're leaving, instead of saying, come again, or something like that, just say Millwood 200. And the other side, you say, welcome to Millwood.
Finally.
So, um, we hope to get that permit soon.
Everything takes forever.
But, um, that's that. Administration's report with Jill Shapiro. Shapiro.
Okay, uh, first half of the 2018-19 school taxes are due by October 1st without penalty. The tax office will be open on Monday, the first, from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. to accept payments in person. And you can always use our online tax payment system without charge at mynewcastle.org and press the icon for Pay Your Taxes. If you're mailing your taxes, please make sure you see them affix a U.S. Postmark to the envelope. Do not just put it in the mailbox and walk away. The 120 sidewalk from Elm to Grafflin School is almost complete. The contractor is waiting for the fabrication of the last catch basin, uh, which is right at the corner of Elm Street. And as soon as that's received, they'll return to finish the job. The 2019 tentative budget, um, will be presented to the board by the end of this week. We will start reviewing it, um, next Tuesday night and Wednesday morning. We'll be presenting it to the board along with discussions with the department heads over the course of two days, next Tuesday night and then Wednesday morning. The tentative budget is in large part a result of staff meetings that Rob Deary and I have been conducting since August. The tentative budget contains staff recommendations for the individual department expenditures. The town board will then take the staff recommendations into consideration and make their own changes to that budget. And that revised budget is the preliminary budget. And the preliminary budget will then be set down for a public hearing, inviting the public's comments and suggestions. Um, and Rob Deary will present his annual budget presentation at the public hearing scheduled for the end of November, and then it'll be set down for approval sometime in December.
So you know I will not be able to make Wednesday morning meetings, any morning meetings.
Is this back?
The morning. Class starts at 5:00 P.M.
Okay.
I did the Girl Scouts announcement. I mean, just...
Thank you.
We're onto resolutions. Just in time.
All right, public hearing, are you done, Jill?
Public comment, new business, go.
Public comment, new business? Josh, do we start with Josh here? Are we doing the public hearing?
The public hearing.
No, just so, just so we have a clarification of, of, of online payments. So if you pay through an ACH payment on our online system, there is no fee. If you pay using a credit card, there is a 2.9% uh, credit card fee that literally is passed along. The town doesn't see a penny of it. It's a separate transaction altogether.
The 2.9 isn't even there.
2.9 now? What do we have to do? Is it three even now? I'm scared. Three even. It clearly says it on it. But if you use an ACH, which is...
Is that all credit cards?
From a transactional... Yeah, it's a blended rate.
Do we take American Express also? Yeah, we probably don't with that rate.
We, we accept it for parking at the train station, but not for, um...
Not on our, over our website.
Right, because it would be one, 3%.
Yeah, it certainly would. And that's why, actually, why we don't accept it.
Got it. Okay, so where's my agenda here? So we just did public comment, new business, and, um...
I move to open a public hearing.
Yeah.
Regarding a local law removing Southview Road from no parking zones and adding an entire length of Southview Road to a no-stopping zone.
Just, just, all favor?
Aye.
A little background on that. It's basically, that's been requested by the neighbors. Um, there's a lot of people that pull into that road, let their kids off, and then walk to the high school, and, you know, and then turn around, and it becomes, uh...
Is the plan, uh, leave me, pardon me, is the plan also to have enforcement beyond just the no parking zone signed?
Yeah, definitely.
And there is a police officer there often in that area, so it should be easy to...
Well, it's not a full call. This acts, uh, it really gets very congested. It wasn't really, it wasn't...
Meant for a drop-off zone. Anybody comment on that?
Okay, so do we close it and leave it open for public comment for a week?
I mean, honestly, in my opinion, I think we should close it and try to get done as soon as possible.
It's a safety issue, yeah.
All right, so I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to vote on it now?
Sure, sure. Oh, we don't have a resolution, so we're just going to, uh, just wing it?
Yeah, because I don't think we were...
Let Nick write up a resolution.
Yeah, we weren't anticipating.
Lisa, you could do it. Go ahead.
Yeah, Lisa, you vote.
Authorized.
Really?
Yeah.
They're right, adopting a local law regarding...
Do I have? I move to, um... I move to adopt a local law removing Southview Road from a no, in Chapco, New York, from a no parking zone and adding an entire length of Southview Road to a no-stopping zone. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
That's impressive.
Lovely. Okay, um, can I move to open a public hearing regarding a local law creating Chapter 95, Article 2 of the Town Code concerning the real property assessment of converted condominium units?
I second just the question, not the actual opening, but I second your question. Yes, you can.
Okay, so moved. Second.
Another question.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Josh?
Okay, just to refresh your memory, we talked about this on the August 10th meeting with regard to a provision in Department Tax Law 581, which is affordable housing, and 339 Y, which is condominium. And, uh, both dictate how the assessor will evaluate these properties, and they're done based on an income approach. So many people call it a condo exemption. It's usually valued at about half of, so a million-dollar condominium would be valued at about four to 500,000 dollars.
Taxed as if it was.
Correct. So what this local law does is it prevents anything that was built, not built as a condominium or affordable housing from converting. And so I can value it based on...
All favor?
It doesn't affect existing, just from people trying to change.
So it would definitely not affect any existing condominium owners or anyone that was in the affordable housing in the couple of building.
And there could just, to confirm, there is a distinction between a townhouse and a condominium.
Townhouse is a style. And a condominium is a form of ownership.
Great.
That was good. That was very succinct.
Was it that? Any other questions?
Nope.
So do we want to sit, keep this open for public?
Not at all. This, I think, is terrific. I think, I have no beef.
This is the first public hearing on this particular? I think we should leave this open. Or do you want to just leave it open for written comments for a week? Why don't we do that?
I guess I can defer to my own policy, but it's a tax issue. Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah.
So why don't we leave it open for a week?
Okay, so I move to close the public hearing, but leave it open for written comments, right, until 5:00 P.M. on, uh...
October. You want to do it on the 5th?
October...
That would be a week and a half.
Do you can see that far?
October 2nd. No, October 2nd is a Monday.
We usually do it like on a Friday.
Yeah, just make it October 5th.
Okay, October 5th until 5:00 P.M. on...
Unless we did it this Friday, we'll vote on it next week, but it's two. All favor?
Aye.
I, I thought we were setting the, uh, public hearing for the leaf blower legislation. I'm not yet ready for that.
We don't have a date?
I thought we were just going to set the public hearing. I know it should have mentioned...
Well, we need, we need a local law. We don't have that yet in the final form. Has everyone circulated it right? So I don't know if everyone's ready, but I'll send it to, um, Ren or we'll make sure the SAB has comments. Just want to make sure Catherine do her comments.
Well, Rob had those changes. Did you make the...
I agree with those changes.
Rob had the changes to reflect the conversation that we had.
Okay.
I wasn't saying, I...
You actually wrote and confirmed us with the way it was written, but it was...
Right, I wasn't saying we should change it. I was saying that it didn't reflect our last conversation, but I was okay with the way it was.
Oh.
That's what I was saying in that comment.
You don't want, why wouldn't you want him to change it before we have the hearing?
No, what I was saying in my comment was that the last draft that they sent, I like it, but I didn't think it accurately reflected where we left off.
We were in the conversation.
I know, but so why doesn't Nick just change it before we have the public hearing?
Well, I was saying, my, my position would be that we wouldn't change it if everybody else wants it to change, and we would. My position was that I liked, I actually liked it the way it was, even though it didn't reflect where we left off.
Where did you leave off?
I see.
He likes my misinterpretation of what...
No, I see. What was different?
What was different was that, what was different is that initially, correct me if I'm wrong, initially, we were... Exempting the school district.
So then we'll vote on the...
And then what we decided to do is, we were also exempting the town. And then we decided we shouldn't exempt the town. That sense, it's a terrible optics. But we also decided that, you know, maybe we shouldn't exempt the school district either. And then what we sort of compromised was that...
Were we concerned about unfounded mandate issue?
Well, yeah, but then the compromise that we left off was basically that, why don't we just exempt all recreational fields, which covers most of the school property anyway? And there's a safety issue too. I mean, the fields, you should be able to keep them safe and use a, you know, the blower to keep them safe, and that would apply to the town as well. But the last draft that came out didn't actually say that. The last draft that came out exempted schools. And I think personally, I'm back to wanting to exempt schools, because the argument that was made to me was that by not exempting schools, we're actually hitting them with an unfounded mandate. And if we're exempting the fields anyway, we're not really talking about that much property. And to me, it's just not a battle that I think is worth waging, when we're going to have a lot of other battles to wage on this front. That was my opinion. So my thing was, I liked the way this, the last draft, but it didn't actively reflect, I think, where we left off.
Has a school voiced any interest in changing over, over time to electric?
No.
He just said they don't want to be subject to this.
I can just, I can just...
Two different issues. One is non-use during certain periods, and another issue is electric is better than gas, even if it's not...
Well, no, the fact of the matter is, the electric doesn't have, even though the SAB may disagree, it doesn't have the oomph in terms of the blow power. So it would take more manpower hours to clean exactly the same area. So it actually translates into an increased cost.
Well, I mean, you know, frankly, I, I wonder if the school board has tried to pursue this question of whether it's an unfounded mandate, or if they're merely making the assumption that it is such, because the SAB has come to us with data that suggests that there isn't a cost increase from moving from blowers...
Actually decreases.
That it actually decreases. And so, you know, if, if the school board, you know, I would just encourage them, regardless of whether or not they're exempted, I would encourage them to sit with the SAB and to take a look at the data.
Yes, I think...
Well, certainly one would think that the health of the students who are there, something that's on their top priority. So one would assume that the school...
I don't know what's funny about it.
Would want to have a...
Just with the particles, just with the particles.
There's two separate, there's two separate issues there. What is banning during certain times?
I don't know how that works.
But then the question is...
They've shared the data with us.
I've seen the data.
The question is whether we should be also mandating the school to do this. I mean, they have kids there. They should want to do this for the, just forget, forget about the emissions, just from the particles. But they should be the one, and by the way, the school has a pretty active green committee, and they're pretty environmentally friendly. And they made, like, they have to know why they're leaving. They have a million things that they've done, and they may do it on their own. The question is whether we should be the ones who force them to do it. And that's, you know, that's an issue first and sudden.
Why would we, would we be too much of a coup, would we do too much of a coup or a shot across the bow if we ask, if we reach out to their committee, the student committee, ask them to come in and share with them, ask them to voice their opinions?
Well, the SAB certainly, you know, works, but it, my son happens to be on both committees. Um, you know, but, uh...
We send a letter to the school board?
Yeah, I just want, I got to think about it.
There is a lot of overlap with the, uh, but just a question, honestly, it's not even so much what's, you know, it's also the controversy. Like, I mean, we're going to have a lot of, there's going to be a lot of pushback, and the question is whether that's worth it in that particular front.
That we send a letter to the school?
Especially if you're exempting the fields anyway.
Just a thought. We have a facilities agreement with them, and they charge us to use their fields anyway. Is there some workout we can make with them where if we're not exempting town properties, that we somehow can clear those fields and they reduce, you know, and we work that into a facilities, the facilities agreement?
But we are, we are blowing the town recreational fields.
Because that's exempt. So it's just not all, so you're talking about the school walks, the driveways, the...
But I, I think, you know, even if we are willing to entertain the notion of exempting the schools without trying to parse out which, which parts of school land you can or cannot blow leaves on, you know, I think the recommendation to send the school board a letter and say, you know, the, you know, we, we strongly encourage you to pursue this as the, you know, and the town is willing to, you know, sit down with you and walk you through the research that we've done and talk to you about how we intend to do it on town-owned property, um, because of, you know, all of the various environmental and noise and health benefits.
And, and saying that letter that we're proposing right now that fields are exempted.
Right.
From this requirement, because I think that's a big...
Maybe I can include the, um, as a cover letter, include the packet from, um, from SAB, the whole PowerPoint presentation.
And there's no rush, there's because, there's no rush, there's because it's not going to take effect.
No, 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 no.
We're going to schedule a hearing on the 9th from the 23rd.
Right, and I guarantee it's going to be more than one session, which we expected will be, and so...
Definitely, yeah.
So on to resolutions?
Yep, I think that was it, right?
Yep, so I moved... I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of 594,318.20 listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher report prepared September 25th. Checks will be issued mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday, September 26th.
All favor?
I move to approve a change order for the Chapco Infrastructure and Streetscape Improvement Project for Boswell Engineering, Change Order Number Two, Proposal for Traffic Signals Designed for the Amount of $12,100. Second.
Favor?
Aye. I move to approve a change order for the Chapco Infrastructure and Streetscape Improvement Project for Boswell Engineering, Change Order Number Three, for various building entrance modifications for the total amount of $16,400.
I move to approve a change order for the Chapco Infrastructure and Streetscape Improvement Project, Granite Engraving located at the King Street and Center Street compass location for the total amount of $4,600.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I move to approve a change order for the Chapco Infrastructure and Streetscape Improvement Project, net cost between, for the net cost between the topsoil, seed, and concrete sidewalk decorative lighting and concrete sidewalk.
Hold on, I think it's option number two.
Yeah, it's option number two.
I move to approve the option number two. It excludes the decorative...
Of $16,500.
Yeah, excludes the decorative sidewalk. Decorative lighting.
Change order, especially right for option number two.
For option number two for $16,500.
Okay, for option number two for $16,500.
Second.
I move to accept the resignation of Police Officer Joseph Miervez, effective September 13th, 2018.
Second. I move to appoint Thomas Mirabella to the position of fourth grade police officer with the Town of Newcastle Police Department in an annual salary of $68,298.95. The appointment date, October 29th, 2018, or upon approval of the resignation warrant statement from Westchester County.
Second.
I move to authorize obtaining bids for various uniform purchases.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize listening to qualifications and price proposals, um, for the operation, maintenance, and technical support of the Millwood Water Treatment Plant.
Second.
All favor?
Did we all agree on number 10?
Yeah.
I do, okay, okay. Uh, whereas many New York State residents are denied access to driver's licenses solely because of their immigration status, uh, now therefore be resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Newcastle express our collective desire for safety and security for all our residents, and further our commitment to pursuing the common good by ensuring shared resources such as roads and highways be accessed and utilized responsibly in safety, safely, and be it further resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Newcastle recognizes immigration law to be a federal concern and enforcement a drain on limited local resources. Be it further resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Newcastle calls upon the New York State Legislature and Governor Cuomo to promptly ensure the issuance of driver's licenses to all New York State residents regardless of immigration status, and be it further resolved, the Town Clerk shall forward a true copy of this resolution duly endorsed to reflect its enactment by the Town Board of the Town of Newcastle to the Executive Chamber with Governor Andrew Cuomo, Assembly Member Buckwald, and Senator Terrence Murphy. Second. Keep going. I move to approve purchase and installation of a loop system at the Chapco Performing Arts Center. Total project cost $16,907.27 for equipment and $5,550 for installation and setup for a total project cost of $22,457.27. And...
Yeah, I thought the whole thing was 5,500.
Yeah, it was less than that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was $5,550 for the total cost, and some of that is offset by a grant that we have already received. Second.
Want to do the next one, too?
Sure.
Aye.
Whereas a not-for-profit charitable organization dedicated to the advancement and promotion of arts and cultural programming for children, which wishes to remain anonymous, the donor, has offered to donate the sum of $35,000 to the town for the sponsorship of children's programming at the Chapco Performing Arts Center. Um, and the grant, as a condition, the grant only be used to sponsor children's programming at the Chapco Performing Arts Center for no other purpose. And there are shows that they've agreed to sponsor, and they have also agreed to pay an amount not less than $32,000 for the purpose of the town entering into a contract with a public relations firm to publicize and promote those children's programs, plus an additional amount of expenses not yet determined, but which will require the approval of the donor and the town administrator pursuant to terms of the contract with the public relations firm. Now therefore be resolved, the Town Board hereby accepts the aforementioned grant from the donor, subject to the condition that the grant will be used exclusively for children's programming at Chapac. Be it further resolved, that Lighthouse Youth Theater and Education, Inc., shall administer and run the children's programming that will be sponsored through the grant, and that Lighthouse shall pay the town for its rental at Chapac for said programming pursuant to the rate schedule set forth on the town's facility rental request for... form, and shall comply with all other terms and conditions therein, be it further resolved in the event the town wishes to host a replacement children's program at CHAP PAC rather than one or more of the events listed in the above whereas clauses, the town shall notify the donor of its intention to make substitution, and the Town Board will approve it, be it further resolved, huh, that within 30 days of the completion of the final program sponsored at the CHAP PAC through the grant, Lighthouse shall provide a written report to the donor, which evaluates the program that was presented insofar as attendance enrollment, whether it attained its goals, whether budgetary expectations were met in potential areas for program improvements, and three, provides reconciliation of how the grant was expended, and be it further resolved, the Town Board approves entering into a contract with co-communications in an amount not to exceed $32,000 to publicize and promote the program, plus an additional amount of expenses not yet determined but which require the approval of the donor and the town administrator, be it further resolved, the town administrators authorized to execute any documents required to take any actions necessary to implement this resolution, subject to review and approval of Town Council, be it further resolved, the town controllers authorized to expend the grant proceeds in a manner consistent with this resolution, and be it further resolved, the Town Board wishes to acknowledge and sincerely thank the donor for its generosity. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are skipping number 12, oh, no, uh, yeah, no, no, number 13, um, I authorize, uh, I move to authorize the issuing of a request for proposals for the Chapacua Hamlet zoning revisions. Second. Okay, I'll do the next page, going on to number 15. I move to accept the proposal from Cartographic Associates, Inc., Pleasant Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, in the amount of $11,700 for processing data recorded January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021, in accordance with the proposal submitted.
Why did you skip to 15?
Because we're not doing the taxi stand, and we're not-
Doing the charitable funds?
Oh, 13, I thought the charitable funds-
The $1,000.
That's the $1,000.
Oh, that's the $1,000.
Not, not the issue that scars that, why?
Okay, not the one in scars, okay. All right, this one is a resolution to authorize to approve charitable funds, um, and this is related to the Federal Tax Cuts and Job Act in the state of New York, and the act of legislation is part of the fiscal 29 budget to authorize counties, local governments, and school districts to establish charitable gifts reserve funds that may be used to defray some of the costs related to public education, healthcare, or the public service provided by that entity, um, and the IRS issued in August 23rd, 2018, proposed regulations provided, providing rules on the availability of federal charitable contribution deductions when the taxpayer receives or expects to receive a corresponding state or local tax credit, um, and basically, the IRS, uh, has come out with, and I'm, uh, summarizing, um, that the IRS invited public comments, they basically took away this ability, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Newcastle believes that the proposed regulations issued by the IRS on August 23rd, 2018 dramatically impair the incentives for individual taxpayers to make contributions to these charitable reserve funds as established by law in the state of New York, and in so doing impair the mission of these funds, namely providing a high-quality public education to all children residing within the district and/or providing necessary and high-quality public services to all residents of Westchester County and the Town of Newcastle, and be it further resolved that the Town of Newcastle believes that the proposed regulations issued by the IRS on August 23rd, 2018 provide insufficient clarity on many topics, as well as arbitrary and unfair distinctions between deductions for individuals compared to deductions for businesses, and contributions to support public education compared to contributions to support private education, and be it further resolved that the Town of Newcastle finds it necessary and appropriate to propose changes to the proposed regulations issued by the IRS to provide additional clarity for the taxpayers of the Town of Newcastle, and to explain and remove any arbitrary distinctions that would effectively and unfairly disadvantage the taxpayers of Newcastle, be it further resolved that the Town of Newcastle should submit public comments on or before October 11th, 2018, that shall reflect the concerns outlined above, and be it further resolved that the Town of Newcastle shall seek to collaborate with other like-minded state, county, municipality, or school district agencies or organizations to express these concerns publicly and to advocate for fair regulations and equitable and principled interpretation of federal tax law that recognizes and rewards the value of contributions in support of the Town of Newcastle, no matter whether the contributor is an individual or a business, whether the charitable entity is public or private.
And contribute an amount no greater than $1,000.
And the Town of Newcastle, to this effort, will contribute an amount no greater than $1,000. Second.
All right.
Woo!
All right.
Okay, so we're skipping taxis now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I move to accept the proposal from Cartographic Associates, Inc., 11 Pleasant Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, in the amount of $11,700 for processing data recorded January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021, in accordance with the proposal submitted dated July 31st, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to declare one, 2009 Dodge Charger, in color blue, with the VIN number indicated here, as surplus to be sold at auction.
Woo-hoo, second.
All in favor?
All right, I move to adopt following resolution, whereas the town received a donation in memory of the lifelong Millwood resident Ralph Evan Manahimer, in the amount of $19,000, what's that?
Eva.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says Evan on there, I apologize, I apologize, in the amount of $19,500, whereas the donation shall be used to improve Manahimer Garden at Getney Park, including installation of benches, picnic tables, a bike rack, and landscaping for the use and enjoyment of the public, and therefore, be it resolved that the Town Board hereby accepts the aforementioned donation to be used in the manner described.
Yeah, it's to create the garden.
To create the garden, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're not doing this next one, correct?
Right, right.
Um, this is the number 19, I'll take us home, sorry, just till your thunder.
We have some other bill.
All right, well, I'll take us home here. I move to approve the extension of an agreement with Enslaw, Enslaw, geez, pardon me, I can't take us home, 80 West, Renata Boulevard, Florida, 32174, for the code red services agreement for the period of December 19th, 2018, through December 18th, 2023, for the amount of $43,599.75, paid as annual installments of $8,718.15.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry. And I move to approve reallocating the NACERTA Clean Energy Community Grant Award for the LED light-
Can I have the, because I didn't review this, the code red extension, and-
It, it just no, doesn't know, the word is-
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay, I move to approve reallocating the NACERTA Clean Energy Community Grant Award for the LED light fixtures to accommodate replacement of 10 lights along North Greeley Avenue, rather than the two light fixtures in the Citibank parking lot. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, shuttle.
Anything else?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
You can read this one, but I think I will, no, no, no.
Okay.
So this is a resolution concerning the shuttle bus at Chapacua Crossing, so resolve that the Town Board agrees to temporarily release SG-
Feal name.
No, 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 right-
Can we make that resolution, or do we refer to the planning board?
No, you need to vote separately on it, and the planning board does as well.
Okay.
Very briefly, just explaining, very briefly, we discussed SG wants out of the-
Right, I know that. Are we gonna let them?
And so, I opposed, my position was not to, and we came to an agreement, to month to month, and we can ascertain-
But that they still have to provide transportation to residents living there, however they sit, and it's gotta be coordinated, Sabrina.
Good, good, yeah, no, this is a good thing, this is great.
So resolve that the Town Board agrees to release SG from the condition contained within the Town Board's land use approval resolution for the Chapacua Crossing project, which required that SG operate a shuttle bus, um, and so long as service of those who need it is, alternative transportation is provided at SG's expense, somewhat show work with the director of planning to ensure appropriate processes are put in place to notify residents of suspension of the shuttle service and arrangements for alternative transportation, and that the suspension is for a period of time beginning October 15th to November 15th, with the right for SG to request renewal, renewal for consideration by the Town Board. And one of the, should we add in there that it's revocable, not that expected, in the event that they're not, non-compliance, providing transportation services?
Did he say that they're gonna provide transportation services?
Well, upon a finding by the director of planning that alternative transportation adequate to meet the needs of residents is not being provided, this resolution shall be revoked.
Provided during all of the same hours of operation that the shuttle was previously.
Second.
We need the biggest sheet of paper, this is what happened.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to call it a night, adjourn this great meeting of people of Chapacua.
Okay, second.
At Newcastle, I apologize, Newcastle, Millwood, Austin, all over, where are you?
Little bit of Manhattan.
Okay, so next meeting is-